Tim Head, Cruz Reeves, Kenneth White, and myself, James Reed. Members of the staff are Warren Adams, Tanya Ingram, and Mr. Smith has not gotten here yet, Carol Ann Pinkston, and Andrea Hatchcock. All right, Tanya, so.
Counselor Jenright.
It's been a while. Maybe you'll miss that. I tell you what, can't speak into the microphone, you know? I've learned that if you don't speak into the microphone, nobody can hear you. Everybody out here can't hear you unless you do it. And sometimes that's good, they don't hear you. But I'm here for a special occasion because Frank and I have been friends for a long, long time. I've been here a long time, but Frank was my first appointment to the planning commission. And I just, and he's been, he's been with us, been loyal to the city, been taking care of the city, he's got his city's heart. And I just want to say thank you, Frank, for that. We've got a special presentation, special recognition from Frank and the mayor. He signed it, Frank. What did he say? Oh, yeah. One, one.
Mr. Jenright. He came here.
Mr. Jenright, can you speak into the mic? We can't hear you.
Come back.
Yeah, about the mic again. But I want to say thank you for the service, Frank. I appreciate what you've done for us. Good luck in what thing you want to do, but I understand that you're happy doing this. And now you go back and play cards, can't you?
So. Thank you. Yeah. I assume everyone has had an opportunity to read the minutes from the last meeting. Are there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. A motion been made in Prop. 2nd to approve the minutes of the last meeting. All those in favor? Those against? All right. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
All right. First item on the agenda. Requests for pilgrim, Pilgrim and Bostick Engineering. Are they here? Yeah. Request final approval of Unique 2024 Plat Number One located on the east side of Mobley Highway approximately six hundred feet south of Coca-Cola Road in an M1 Light Industry Zoning District. Good afternoon.
My name is Taylor Manning with Pilgrim and Bostick, requesting final plat approval for said plat. I'm feel, or I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all might have.
All you're doing is making two lots out of one, basically, right?
Yes.
Are there any questions from the commissioners? Are there any questions from members of the audience? All right, a motion is in order.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made in Prop. 2nd. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Good luck. Request final approval of 400th North Perry Street Plat Number One located on the northeast corner of Columbus Street and North Perry Street.
Good afternoon, I'm Judy Jones with Goodwood Mills in Kaywood.
Wait a minute, I'm not finished yet.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. On the corner of Columbus Street and North Perry Street and T40 and T5 Zoning District. Go.
Thank you. As you can see, there are three separate parcels. Parcel one is a lot that's got two hotels that are being constructed. The parcel two is large, a portion of Lawrence Street. And then parcel three is owned by the city of Montgomery. And the plans are, we're in the process of vacating that portion of Lawrence Street. Of course, they can't build anything over because of all the utilities that do exist. But there's issues with not having ample parking for the hotels. And so by vacating this portion and purchasing the property from the city, this will allow them to have, you know, additional parking facilities.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments by other commissioners? Are there any questions or comments? All right, a motion is in order.
Move to adopt.
Motion been made in Prop. 2nd. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you very much. Good luck on your project. Request final approval of Ariarte Plant Number One. Did I butcher that name?
I'm Guthrie Jeffco. Jeffco engineers.
All right, all right. Plat Number One located approximately nine hundred feet east of Old Watahka Highway and approximately one thousand feet south of Jack Drive in an Ag Two and R50 Residential District, Residential Zoning Districts. All right, Mr. Jeffco.
I'm sorry with this hearing system and my bad hearing, I couldn't understand you. I didn't mean to butt in. But I am Guthrie Jeffco, Jeffco engineers and surveyors, representing the owner, and asking you approval of a 22.48 acre tract that has access along an undeveloped roadway known as Carrrie Road. He will improve, and he wants to put a residence there and a small shop and a large piece of property, and would appreciate your approval, so he can proceed.
Are there any questions from the commissioners?
What did you say is the name of that road to the south?
It was recorded in 1946 on a separate plat.
My map doesn't say that. I just didn't know.
Are there any questions from members of the audience? Please come forward. Please give your name and address, please.
My name is Brendan Gail Hall McQueen. My property is in front of his property. I'll call you later. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
That was mine. Anyway, we own thirty-six acres in front of his property, and they were using our road to get to his property, which they were not given permission to do. We found that now they're going to be going on Carrrie Street or whatever the street is, and we were told that it was going to be developed for a trailer park. And we didn't want that because it would bring down the value of our property, but we were told that he's going to put one residence and a shop there. And we just want to make sure it's going to be one residence and a shop and not end up with five, six, seven, eight, ten houses later on the property because of the fact that we wanted our property to be desirable as well. So that's the only thing I have asked it. If he's doing, coming in on Carrrie Road, and he's going to just put one residence and a shop, there's no objection whatsoever. But that's why we were here. My brother, who's also owner of the property, is air property.
Mr. Jeffco, did you understand her question?
I did. We're here for the purpose of a plat.
Mic, up to the mic.
Excuse me.
Okay.
I understand that we're here for the purpose of the plat, and it doesn't have anything to do with the land use, except it is going to be used in accordance with the zoning. So we're asking for the approval of 22.48 acres. Don't know anything about a trailer park. Hadn't been, hadn't heard the owner speak at all to me about it.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from the audience? All right. Ma'am, did you understand what he just said? Okay, no problem. A motion is in order.
I'll move to adopt. I'll second.
A motion been made in Prop. 2nd. All those in favor? Those opposed?
Unanimous.
Item number four. Request recommendation for approval to rezone property containing 1.09 acres located on the north side of Noble Avenue between South Perry Street and South Lawrence Street from B2 Commercial and R60D Zoning District to a R68 Apartments Zoning District on Noble Avenue.
Okay, again, I have the owner with me. If his questions I can't answer, we'll certainly refer to him. This is in an area where the plan to use is in accordance with the neighborhood and the zoning. And I don't know if, Tanya, were you able to get them copies of these?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, that's the best we've got right now because no architecture or engineering drawings have been done, so it's not going to be highly dense. And as you see, he's got plans for four buildings and to utilize existing, possibly, if he could, if it's financially feasible to utilize that existing, if not, he'll tear it down.
Well, I guess, I guess the main question is, just straight up, will apartments be built?
Will they be what?
Will their apartments be built on this area, in this?
Yes, there'll be four units is what he plans right now, with six, six, six units per four buildings, equals twenty-four, yeah. With a access drive coming off of Noble and swinging around into Perry.
Well, I guess my question would be, to our legal staff, would be, is apartments considered traditional neighborhood? Mm-hmm.
I think we would have to look into that to see if that's a determination. I wouldn't say it's not.
She wouldn't say it is, anyway. But.
Like, how many units are the apartments going to be? You know, is it a four-unit apartment? Is it a six?
Six.
Going to be six per building, four buildings plus there's an existing one there that he may run and renovate depending on whether it's financially feasible. Which, based on that, we're talking about twenty-six units.
Yeah, I would need to look into that.
Tanya, do you want to speak on the department's behalf, behalf, or why you, why the department objects to it?
Robert Smith made this comment, but he made the comment based on the 2040 Plan.
Okay.
And the 2040 Plan calls for the triplex, the duplex, the quadplex.
Townhomes.
Townhomes.
Versus apartments.
And part of this area is in historical.
Exactly.
You've got to go before the Board of Justices, or, 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 or.
Do you want to delay this until we find out about the?
I'd have to ask the board.
And the legal matter?
Do we have to have five votes, you think?
Yep.
And go to six of them. I need to ask, there's only six years we've got to have five votes, and I don't know what they're thinking about. You can delay it or take a chance on it getting turned down. If it gets turned down, and we are twelve months away from coming back again, is that still a rule?
You'd have to talk to.
Yes, sir.
Is it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah. If it gets turned down, it will come to a decision.
Well, the.
He said he'd delay it.
Okay, all right, no problem, no problem. And, and, and you want to delay it to check into, because it leaks over into the Historic District. And then the question about the Traditional Neighborhood. So, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
What's the question with the Historical District?
Huh?
What's the question with the Historical District?
Well, it's not a question. Some of the land leaks into the Historical District.
It does.
Yeah.
That, that would ultimately just mean that the design of whatever goes there would have to be reviewed by the Architectural Review Board.
Right.
So you can look at that as effectively another layer of protection for the district.
Yeah.
It's highly doubtful anyone would get away with building a rectangular block with a flat roof and a wall of windows. The design would have to fit in with the character of the Historic District. So I think you really want to give that consideration as well if you move forward.
Well, I did speak to Mr. Rose, and he told me exactly what I would have to do, make sure I brought all the materials, and once I got the plans and all that, set it in front of him. Yeah, so I, I have spoken with him.
Okay. So I think bringing it back would be a good idea.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And just for clarity, is there any of this property in connection with Jeanetta Ditch? Tanya?
I do not know.
To my knowledge, it is not.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it. Item number five. This is a public hearing for a development plan for a building to be located at 4458 North Chase Boulevard in an M1 Light Industry Zoning District.
Chairman Reed, Chairman Reed, I'm going to have to recuse myself for the next three items.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so.
Okay, but still, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Brad Flowers, Flowers and White Engineering. What I bring before you today on North Chase Boulevard right here, Johnstone Supply is an HVAC supplier, distribution warehouse, and what they've got, we brought the plat to you a couple of months ago, and they will be developing on this lot right here. You should have a development plan in your pocket, just bringing that for information.
Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners? Are there any questions or comments from the audience? All right, consider a public hearing has been held.
Thank you.
Item number six is also a public hearing for a development plan for a building located at 329 Rifle Range Road in an M1 Light Industry Zoning District.
Yes, sir. Development plan coming to you out off of Wares Ferry on the far eastern end over by Gilby Prison. It's Rifle Range Road, NEC, which is an environmental consulting company, has purchased the property, and they're building an office to go in that location. I believe I'll have the site planned with you. If you have any questions, I'm open to entertain those.
Did you say they're going to build an office?
Yes, sir. So it's an environmental consulting company. They don't, they're mostly out doing wetland studies, AIDM permits, things of that nature, so they don't have the need to be local downtown, so being out in this area is perfect for them.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners? Are there any questions or comments from the members of the audience? All right, consider a public hearing has been held. Thank you, sir. Item number seven. Request final approval of Hampstead Plat Number 30 located on the eastmost end of Conduit Street in a T4R General Urban Restricted, T4 General Urban Open and T5 General, T5 Urban Center Zoning Districts.
Brad Flowers again. So what this is, is last phase on the northeast side of the lake there at Hampstead. If you're familiar with the property, that's Taylor Road on your map up to the top left, and then Park Crossing. The property actually touches Park Crossing right there, and that's Park Crossing School in your picture there just to the, to the bottom right. But that is the last phase up in that corner. And what they've got, they're under construction currently, probably two months-ish out from being complete on that, so we're trying to get the final plat in so we can address comments on anything that we might have. Ninety-two lots ranging twenty to fifty-two foot width, standard plat that we have done out at Hampstead numerous times. Open to any questions.
Are there any questions from the commissioners?
Is it fair to assume in the future that it connects with Park Crossing?
I do not believe that is any connection whatsoever. Hampstead desires to stay with their main entrance. While it's a long travel, I do not anticipate any connection whatsoever. And I know the design does not allow for that. If you look at the initial, look at the plat that we have, I don't think there's any anticipation of, well, turn it back, there's a street right there, but I don't think there's any anticipation of that.
Well, the street did end there, I thought.
Yeah, just that end.
Are there any questions or comments from members of the audience? Motion is in order.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion been made in Prop. 2nd. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Good luck on your project. Item number eight, Oak Grove Baptist Church. Public hearing for a developmental plan for a new building to be located at 6401 Woodley Circle in an Ag One Zoning District.
Stephen speaks with Larry Speaks and Associates representing Oak Grove Baptist Church. This property is located on a one-acre piece on Woodley Circle. They are proposing to demolish their existing building and construct a new building for their church services. It'll include a parking lot, stormwater detention. They'll use the same entrance that's there now and same water and sewer services.
So it's going to be just a church? You're going to, they're going to build a church?
Correct.
Are there any questions, comments from the commissioners? And this is a public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the members of the audience? Please come forward.
Yes, good evening, Mary Phelan Jackson, President.
Just pull the mic down.
Who's upper down? Thank you. She doesn't like it. Yes, Mary Phelan Jackson, President of Macedoni Community Association. We would like to commend and congratulate Oak Grove Baptist Church on rebuilding their structure in our neighborhood. I think Stephen, you were out in the office yesterday, but we, our neighborhood association did speak to Paul McQuinnon, and he informed us about the retention pond because that was a concern that one of the streets had since that neighborhood has no drainage, stormwater and drainage. So we fully, hardly, as a neighborhood association, support Oak Grove Baptist Church in items number eight and items number nine.
Any other comments from members of the audience? And since this is a public hearing, there is no vote. So we go to item number nine, which is, final request for the Oak Grove Church Plat Number One located on the south side of Woodley Circle, approximately six hundred feet from Henry Drive in an Ag One Zoning District.
So, so this plat is the, is the same piece of property?
Yes.
It's a one-acre piece, the property was just never platted, so we're taking it through as a, as a final plat.
May I make a comment that I appreciate you communicating with the people, with the neighborhood and, and getting that communication straight about what's coming and all of that. We appreciate that.
We appreciate her calling. You know, I'd rather talk in advance of the meeting so she, we can, we can clarify some things.
Exactly, exactly.
Right. So thank you, Mr. Jenright. Yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right, a motion is in order.
Move to approve.
Whoa.
It's my district. It's my district.
A second. A motion has been made in Prop. 2nd. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right. Thank you very much. And number 10. Public hearing for a developmental plan for a building to be located at 10-800 Highway 80 East in the M1Q Zoning District.
So this location, Stephen speaks again, Ju Young Manufacturing. There is an existing facility sitting at the corner of Smothers Road and Highway 80. This is out east, east of Mid Lane, if you know the location, and they're proposing to construct another building, a hundred and fifty thousand square foot building, warehouse building, right next to their current facility to expand their operations. They, it will access directly off Highway 80. We've already, DOT has already verbally told us, they can have the entrance. It'll connect the water and sewer. They'll have approximately seventy-four employees per shift. They have two shifts proposed, so they're, they'll have some, and it is basically a warehouse facility.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the?
And due to that, Highway 80 being so narrow there, they're going to have a deceleration and acceleration lane?
No, sir. DOT didn't want that right in there.
Really?
Yes, sir. We talked to them before we ever even started development plans, and they did not want any turn lanes right in that section.
Lord have mercy. Any other questions from the commissioners? Are there any questions from members of the audience? And since this is a public hearing, there is no vote. But a public hearing has been held.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There is Mr. Smith right there. Request final approval of Edna Lucas Estate Plat Number One, A, located on the south side of Highway 80 East, approximately five hundred feet east of Smothers Road in an M1Q Light Industry Qualified Zoning District.
So this is the plat, seventeen and a half acres for the above discussed side for Ju Young. So it's a seventeen and a half acre site. It'll, it's a big triangle, basically, that fronts on Highway 80.
Are there any questions or comment from the commissioners? Are there any questions or comment from the audience? All right, a motion is in order.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion been made in Prop. 2nd. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Good luck on your project.
All right, we appreciate that.
Item number 12. Request to rezone one lot located on the north side of East South Boulevard, approximately thirteen hundred feet west of Narrow Lane Road, from an O1 Office Zoning District to a B2 Commercial Zoning District. Is there anyone? Mohammed M. Fran? All right, we'll go on to number 13. Request recommendation for approval to rezone property containing half acre located on the south side of Duff Street, approximately six hundred feet east of McDowell Lane, from an R60D Duplex Residential Zoning District to a R99 Mobile Home Subdivision Zoning District. All right.
My name is Perez Harris. Do I need to give my address?
Yes, please.
6701 Winston Blunt Boulevard, number 240311, Montgomery, Alabama, 36124.
Okay. So go ahead.
The, the plan is to, I guess, stay consistent with what's already in the neighborhood. They're about, as you're approaching my property, I read about. They're about, as you're approaching my property, I read about five mobile homes before you get to my property. Right next to it is an empty lot. To the right of it, there are currently two mobile homes and a mobile home in the far, far corner over there. So the zoning request is kind of consistent to what's already out there. So in essence, it's like in a two-tenths of a mile radius, uh, eight mobile homes.
Well, sir, uh, uh, we, we can't enforce, we, we, we can't enforce what is already there.
Okay, okay.
Number one, that's the first thing. And, uh, but northeast, south, and west are, uh, R-sixtyDs, um, duplex residential. So you, so you're putting a mobile home right in the middle of that?
What I'm saying is currently, I got pictures of it, as of today, directly next door to me, it's a mobile home. Next door to it is a mobile home. Next door to it is a mobile. I understand what you're saying, you can't.
Yeah.
Kind of go with what's already there, but that's kind of consistent to what's already there.
There's a lot of nice homes out there too, brick homes.
I have pictures of it, if you need, if you wanna reference, I have pictures of it.
And the, uh, planning department objects to the, objects to the, uh, rezoning, correct? Are there any other questions from the, uh, commissioner?
Have you, have you talked to anybody out there in the neighborhood?
Um, I haven't. My family's from there. Um, I, I don't know, uh, a lot of the, uh, current individuals that live out there. I haven't, uh, probably should have, uh, but I have not spoken with anyone.
Is this, is this for your, your use?
Yes, ma'am. I, I only, uh, property that's in red and the property that's behind it, which is, uh, she's in red and then there's another acre behind it, which is, uh, four hundred, about four hundred feet from the, uh, from the street. So it's an actual acre and a half that I own.
And the Westview Missionary Baptist Church is across the street.
Ms. Pinkston. This puts, this puts us in a really unique situation, because by definition it's spot zoning. On paper.
Correct.
It's spot zoning. But he's saying that there's trailers already there, so it, it, you know, if we okay it, then we okay in spot zoning.
So let me understand correctly, so the adjacent properties to his property is zoned what?
R-sixty.
R-sixty. R-sixty.
But you're telling me they're trailer sitting on those parts?
I got a picture right now. I got a vibe.
Can you approach, yeah, I'd like to see those pictures.
So I go back to you, Ms. Pinkston, what, what are we doing?
You are not allowed to spot zone. And if what he is saying is accurate, then they're in violation of the zoning code if there's a mobile home.
Is there any, is there anything to do to eradicate that problem?
That's what they did, yeah.
Can I speak up?
You're gonna have to.
Chairman.
Yes.
Those mobile homes may have gotten approved years ago before, um, there was a time that people could ask for mobile homes in any district. That was at least fifteen years ago, so those may have been approved prior to the current.
But I guess when I'm at, the properties that those mobile homes are sitting on.
Yeah.
Are they zoned for mobile homes?
They may have gotten approval from the Board of Adjustment years ago.
They just gave them adjustment on that, on the use.
It's still zoned the same, but they may have gotten approval years ago.
I'm with you, okay, that answers.
I think if you, I think if you look under the citizens portal, I think it'll actually say zone manufactured home for all the ones that, that I'm speaking on, that I've got pictures of. It's actually zoned manufactured as a citizen portal, as a, with the citizen portal.
That's what the county is assessing it as, a mobile home, manufactured.
All of them are zoned like manufactured homes.
There, there's several out there that's been there a long time. They're fake, they're dilapidated, they're uninhabitable.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna say this, I appreciate you coming down here trying to make the property for legal use. You know, I mean, it's adjacent properties are, are, you know, they, they were kind of skirted, and if they got more adjustment, he's asking for legal use.
Right.
You know, rezoning to make it a legal use to be in line with what is, is adjacent to its properties. I, I can't, I can't fault him for that.
But, but it, but they still put us in a situation where we're.
Spot zoning.
Spot zoning. And. Which is illegal, yeah. Uh, okay, are there any other questions or comments? Yes.
Tony, I got a question. Is there a means to go to the Board of Adjustment and ask for a variance to put a, okay?
Nope.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Are there any questions or comments from the audience?
We wish we could, but we can't.
So motion is in order. All right, no action, no motion. Sir, I'm sorry, but it is what it is.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Like I said, I appreciate you trying to make it, doing it a legal manner.
Absolutely, absolutely. Item number fourteen.
That's too bad.
Request recommendation for approval to rezone property containing one-point-five acres located on the southeast side of Hannyville Road, approximately four hundred feet north of, uh, Lamont Street from R-sixty-D zoning district to B-two commercial zoning district.
Yes. My name is, uh, Hertis Vaughn.
You have to speak up, give your name and address.
Okay, my name is Hertis Vaughn. My address is thirty-five twenty-one Hangle Road, lot sixteen through twenty. And I'm trying to get a little flea market opened up over there, if I can.
Do you have plan, do you have, uh, any kind of plan? For the flea market, I mean, do you have plans, is basically?
No, I don't have plans, but I got my building up, I'm gonna take the land off and everything.
Okay. Okay. Let me ask you this. Would you have a problem with it being qualified as a B-two, but only for the flea market or maybe an office? Would you have a problem with that?
No.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners? Any questions from the audience? All right, a motion is in order.
Move to approve with the qualification that it, uh, could only be a flea market or slash office, or in or slash office.
It's a off, excuse, it's, it's an office. It's a building there with, in the land behind it.
Right.
The building will be as an office, and I got a little room in there to boost it, so.
Right. Okay. Do I have a second? Is there a second? No seconds, so I guess there's no action, Tony.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, make a motion to qualify for flea market only.
That's a, that's a Dunn. Dunn just made the same motion.
I said flea market in slash slash office.
Right.
Right, because he already got a building there that he gonna use for his office.
I guess flea market would be a building. Disregard my motion.
Okay. All right, no action, Tony.
Just so y'all know, the last two items automatically go to city council for final action.
Right.
Okay, just wanted everybody to know.
Right. And, thank you, sir. Uh, request final approval for text amendment to the city code, Appendix B subdivision regulation, section, uh, three, requirements for plat and supplementary data. Uh, with this, oh, I was looking for you over there, you already here. All right, go ahead.
Okay, there's really two reasons for these proposed amendments. Number one, are the subdivision regulations and the zoning code were not consistent with each other. And the second reason is to make it absolutely clear that if you submit any sort of development plan, you must include the sidewalks on that plan, because it didn't specifically specify that before. So with regard to the subdivision regulations, under section three, pre-application and preliminary approval of added sidewalks. A few pages other forward under plat and data for planned unit developments with added sidewalks as being required to be shown. And then under section five C, we have changed business area to non-residential areas, just for clarification. And then under section six C, we have added sidewalks for commercial development plans. We've added sidewalks for industrial development plans, office development plans, and residential development plans. So that's the only changes that have been made or, or are proposed for the subdivision regulations.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners?
I have one. Um, so the requirement of the sidewalks, you know, just for instance, in the, in the, um, in the sub regs. So are you saying that any, any property that you plat that's in a specific zoning, you say it's commercial zoning, the sidewalk will be required? Is that, or it says where sidewalks were required? So is, is the staff gonna state if it's required? Need to follow, if there's no sidewalks present, that's where I'm getting at.
Yeah, this is where it links into the zoning code, which it shows you where they are required, because what not required, you would see in agricultural areas.
That's, that's where I'm getting at.
Yeah, so this is where the two sort of tie in with each other.
You see where I'm pointing, like, if it's a rural setting, there's no sidewalks, but you're saying it's required. You know, any development plan that may be, pop up in a area that's kind of rural of nature, sidewalks may not be required. If required, they're gonna have to be this width.
Yes.
Gotcha, I understand.
Warren, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Who's gonna be responsible for the maintenance of those sidewalks?
Well, that would, all this is basically saying is when you do a development, most of our development plans do show sidewalks. In some cases, they don't, and then that causes issues with engineering and traffic, because they want sidewalks. So all we are doing here is basically saying where you have to provide a sidewalk, you must show them on the development plans. It's really so that there's no doubt that when they go forward to engineering with their construction drawings, it's just so that they must show them on the development plans.
But I, I think my question would be, so if a development gets done and the sidewalk's there and ten, fifteen years go by and that sidewalk crumbles, who is responsible for that sidewalk?
Well, that would follow exactly the same process as development plans that do show sidewalks. I mean, the city has a procedure in place where they agree on who's maintaining them. I believe in most cases, the city, the city actually takes ownership of them. But that would obviously be depending on where it is and what it is, if it's, you know, that would be.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, a motion is in order.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
unanimous.
The next text amendment is a request recommendation of approval of a text amendment to the city code, Appendix C, zoning, Article seven, Article, uh, Section one, regulation applying to all districts. All right. And, and here, basically, you're just explaining what a sidewalk is.
Here we're explaining what a sidewalk is, because in the subdivision regulations, it states that sidewalks, where required, shall be a minimum of five feet wide in residential areas and a minimum of seven feet wide in business areas. But if you actually look at some of the subdivision descriptions.
Yeah.
Which have been corrected, it actually states they shall be a maximum of five feet and seven feet. So the two completely contradicted each other. One said minimum of five and seven, and the other one said maximum of five and seven. So this is just really making it clear that sidewalks in residential areas shall be a minimum of five feet and a minimum of seven, which ties in with what's in the subdivision regulations. So there was that inconsistency basically between the two, between the two documents. So we're just spelling it out here, and then we actually corrected it in the various zoning districts as you go through the, the rest of the document. So in residential areas, it clarifies minimum with five feet, and in non-residential areas, it clarifies minimum with seven feet.
Okay, so you, so we're just clearing up, uh?
Clarif, making the two documents consistent with each other, yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the commissioners? Are there any questions from the audience? All right, a motion is in order.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion been made and second. All those in favor?
unanimous.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And I think that's it.
Good job.
Need an adjourned.